Are you safe to have it lowered?
Hi. Welcome to the forum for the 2018 School Board Candidates. We would like to thank you for attending the forum. I am Jordi Torres, a chairman for the West Dallas Youth Commission. All questions have been written by the West Dallas Youth Commission members. The rules are as follows. Each candidate will be afforded an opening statement of not more than two minutes. Questions will be asked by commissioners and each candidate will be afforded not more than two minutes per answer. Time will be kept with one minute, 30 seconds, and a final stop. Questions will be asked in rotating order, so this means that the first question will be asked by Ms. Sajeki, or I mean, sorry, the first person to respond to question one will be asked by, or will be Ms. Sajeki. The first person to respond to question two will be Mr. Schultz, and so on. We'll give you a little reminder. At the conclusion, each candidate will be afforded not more than two minutes a closing statement. The order will be reverse order to that of the opening statement. You'll now have two minutes to give your opening statement, starting with Ms. Sajeki.
Well, thank you, and thank you for having this forum. I'm Sue Sajeki. I'm married to Richard Sajeki for 35 years. He had seven children when I married him, so I was an instant mom. I was a grandmother before I had my own children. My two sons are Andy and John. They went through our school district, and they must have taught them pretty well because Andy is an electrical engineer and John just graduated from Marquette with a master's degree in web data international marketing. This brings me to a statement that I often say, that we are teaching two future skills as web marketing was not known when he graduated from Nathan Hale. I worked at Northern Light in purchasing and left as the secretary to the president, although I was more of an administrative assistant. I left Northern Light when I became a mom, and I was instantly began to be part of the PTA. I'm now involved in many community organizations, the PTA, West Dallas Women's Club. I was active with CAD. I have now joined Joni Litke's heroin opiate task force to fight the deadly drug scourge that affects our community and others. We attend Holy Trinity Church. I want to do more to develop the trauma-informed care that our, and get our students the help they need before they get into trouble at school. I'm currently the chairperson of the Leadership and Learning Committee, which includes many technology components. I work closely with Deidre Reamer, I are highly skilled director, and Adam Henkel. I very much enjoy serving on the board.
Hello, my name is Gary Schultz. I'm a 22-year resident of the Village of West Milwaukee. I am married with two kids. My daughter is a Central graduate and a sophomore in college. My son is a senior at West Alice Central, and on June 19th, he will be heading to Army Reserve Basic Training. After Reserve Basic Training, he will be heading to Advanced Individual Training as either a plumber or a pipe fitter. For a living, I work in the information technology field. During the time, my kids have attended school in the district. I have volunteered in the Cub Scouts, Recreation Department, Lancer Band, PTA, and the West Alice Central Booster Club. Outside of school-related volunteering, I have been a member of the West Milwaukee Police Commission for 11 years. The potential exists for a bright future for our district. I want to be part of an effort that provides our schools with the resources needed to make sure all schools can meet the needs of students as we move forward in a new direction for the district. If you haven't already heard, CTE, Career and Technical Education, is the next focus for education. We need to make sure that all West Alice, West Milwaukee students, regardless of neighborhood school boundary, have the educational opportunity in a CTE track that best fits their abilities and interests. So the challenge we face is making sure that the students at Pershing have the same opportunity for a start in CTE programs that a student at Mitchell has. This follows for intermediate schools and high schools. If elected to the school board, I will try to the best of my ability to fight for all students having the same educational opportunities regardless of neighborhood school boundary.
I apologize, I don't have a written statement, I'm going to go off the cuff. I seem to, I'm a lot more comfortable in that style, so I apologize in advance if I begin to ramble. My name is Stephanie Emmons. I've lived here since 2003. In 2009, I got divorced, and I decided to stay here in the West Dallas, West Milwaukee community. My son was three years old, and I chose to stay in this community because this was where I wanted him to go to school. I eventually bought a house again in this district, and we began our enrollment at Wilson and now at Frank Lloyd Wright. From the get-go, before I ever had children, I had friends who told me, you know, someday you should be on the school board. They knew that's where my passion was and that's where my organizational skills and where my passion and where my determination would lie. So lo and behold, a few years after that, I find myself butting heads against years of bureaucratic, going nowhere, and said this is a time for a change. And I was fortunate to get onto the school board in 2015 and was seeking a second term now. This would be the last term that I would seek. I've enjoyed my time on the school board, but I've certainly not gotten to do what I thought I was going to get to do. I thought we would have a chance to create and a chance to innovate and a chance to move the needle forward. About 90 days after I got on the school board, I was given some pretty bad news, and our Director of Finance came in and said, oh, by the way, you're about $10 million in the red. Oh, okay. Wasn't quite prepared for that to be what I was going to be tackling for the next two years of my term. And that's pretty much all we've done, is we've cut, we've reorganized, and we've tried to make do and keep our educational progress moving forward. I'm looking forward to an, hopefully, another opportunity to kind of push that needle forward and, to Gary's point, to make sure that we have equity across our district for all of our families and residents.
Hi, everyone. My name is Christine Klug. I also don't prepare anything because I feel like if I read it off the page, I'm just going to get nervous, so this is just coming from my heart, this is who I am. I've been a resident in West Alice for 25 years. I first rented. It was about that time that I met the father of my children, and we started building a financial services business in Elm Grove. Shortly, well, a few years after, we started a family. My daughter Gabby was born in 1996. And one of the things that I really appreciate in people, when they can run a business and also have a relationship together, for us, it just didn't work. So I decided to put Gabby in daycare and take a job with MCI, working as a small to medium-sized business sales consultant, and while, we all know what happened to MCI. Shortly thereafter, I took an administrative position with the Blood Center of Southeastern Wisconsin, and it was during my employment there that I became pregnant with my son. So realizing that family was first, and what I wanted to do was to provide them with some flexibility, but also to have, you know, the environment of being an at-home mom. So I took a job as a medical transcriptionist and worked for 17 years, you know, doing that. In 2003, I purchased our family home, and at the end of 2006, 2007 school year, after I had volunteered to be the co-president of the PTA of my kid's elementary school, there was a definite shift in our family dynamic. But I continued to stay here in the district and offer stability to my kids because I believed in those schools here, and I didn't want to change anything for them. Being a medical transcriptionist allowed me that flexibility to do that. And I'm going to stop right there, maybe I'll share a little bit later so I don't get the finished sign. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Our first question will be asked by Cecilia Guerrero, a senior from West Alice Central. The first response will be given by Ms. Sajeki.
Hello. What do you believe is considered in a well-rounded education?
What do I consider a well-rounded education?
What do you believe creates a well-rounded education?
Wow, that's a good one.
Thank you.
Well, I think that when you start, you need to know who you are and what you want to do. And because we do surveys on your interests, I think that you should be pursuing your interests, and we should be helping you. And with the personalized education that we are trying to give to our students, you would be, you would be channeled into things that are of your interest. When you leave school, you should be able to read and write, you should know the country's history, you should be able to communicate globally, and certainly be, have digital, be able to have the computer skills that you're going to need. So with, between technology and being able to understand technology, I really don't need another minute because I really think that when you leave, you should have the confidence in what your skills are to be able to move forward. And we should be helping you develop those confidences. At Central, you have Avid, and that helps, and I would like to see Avid at Hale. So those are the things that, that I would think are well-rounded education.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz?
I would start by saying, a well-rounded education is one in which a student is able to communicate, in where we live in. Communications are probably one of the most important skills needed. Without communications, you know, you end up in situations where your job prospects are going to be dim. You know, many, many occupations that our kids are going to pursue in the future will require things to write documentation. If you're an engineer, you might be required to write documentation. If you're in information technology, I'm in information technology, we are constantly documenting. And you're constantly communicating when you're working on projects. So I believe that the ability to read, the ability to write at certain levels creates the foundation for the education. Then from there, it's pursuing your interests. Where do you think you want to go with a career? How do you want to pursue your interests in such a way that you're going to provide a good living for yourself? And then, part of that is providing for the community, volunteering. Some, some people want to be in a situation where their education can help them provide, volunteer, participate in volunteer activities in the community, give back to the community. If they stay in West Alice, in the West Milwaukee, at all school district, they can provide back to the school district. So, but it really, it starts with a good foundation of, I believe, communications, as I said earlier. Being able to write, being able to read, being able to comprehend, and then be able to disseminate that information and take ideas and present those back.
Thank you. Ms. Emmons?
I think I take a little bit more holistic approach to that question, and I think that there's some variance based on what student we're talking about. To me, a well-rounded education is being prepared for what comes next, whatever that's going to be. We talk about how we're training for jobs that don't even exist yet. So it's about being prepared. Well, what does that look like? You know, communication skills, obviously, have, have to be, you know, first and foremost, communicating with each other, with teachers, with business people, with ourselves. Developing a sense of character, who you are as a person, what you stand for, what you believe in. A sense of advocacy. What do you want to fight for? What do you want to feel, what do you feel so strongly about that you will write about it and speak about it and talk about it? Being a problem solver is an underrated skill that I don't think we talk enough about. It's not about memorizing a bunch of facts or, you know, regurgitating data. It's about learning how to think and how to be a problem solver and get from point A to point Z using whatever skills and tools you have in front of you. Developing a sense of community, whether that's within your school, or a group, or with professors and teachers, or within a family, within a church group. But all of those things together, I think, go towards the holistic approach to a person and what develops, what becomes a good member of society. And I think those two things are interwoven with what a well-rounded education looks like.
Thank you. Ms. Klug?
Well, obviously, you need to start with a solid foundation, right? So as you start school, you learn to read, you've got your math, you've got, you know, and then it expands beyond that, writing, things like that. I think in order to become a well-rounded learner, you have to have an open mind, right? Because there's going to be some subjects that you go, wow, this is really tough for me. But there are going to be some subjects that you get and go, wow, I love this, right? I think also that a part of being a well-rounded learner is also really kind of understanding who you are as a person. You know, some of us are very visual people, some of us love to, to write. You need to recognize what your talents are, and then sometimes, you know, you're going to have to push yourself in areas where you need to achieve that maybe not exercise that strong part of who you are. But I think that moving on into the future, as a lot of, you know, people have said different skills and different things like that, it's really understanding who you are. Be honest with, with yourself and understand that, yeah, there's going to be some challenges and some things that, there's some areas in your education where you're going to have to work hard, but that also creates a well-rounded learner. I don't really know what else to explain beyond that point. That's kind of where my focus is. I mean, I agree with the community spirit and all of that, giving back, but that's, again, a part of understanding who you are and exercising that as you learn.
Thank you for your responses.
The next question will be asked by Dane Bauer, a sophomore from West House Central, and the first response will be given by Mr. Schultz.
Hello. How do you think technology can be effectively integrated into the classroom? Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
How do you believe that technology can be effectively integrated into the classroom?
We need to, to integrate technology, we need to look at the ability of, of the students at the different grade levels. So, starting with our kindergartners and going up to 12th grade, what, what tools are available by what kinds of services? You know, Google is really big in the school, so we know everybody uses Google. Google has a lot to offer. But as we, so Google is, is good at a young age. As we go up to our later stages in the educational career, as you get into high school, we need to look at what we're doing as youngsters, in the young age, and how do we provide students with a progression into more advanced systems? Many, where I work and many businesses where they work, they're not using Google. They're switching over. They're going to use things like Microsoft, Microsoft Office 365. So are we preparing our students as they progress? Are they progressing to a point where we're teaching them to use other tools that are out there, or are we keeping them in one line of tools through their whole career? Some students are going to be better equipped to use certain tools better than others. So we need to, we need to also have a situation where some students are going to be more rudimentary in what they can do and what they can use, and then some students are going to be more advanced. So how can we take those students that are more advanced and provide them to a way to excel in using technology?
Thank you. Ms. Emmons?
Could you please repeat the question?
How can technology be effectively integrated into the classroom?
Sure. Technology certainly isn't going away. It's probably changed five times since we started this conversation, actually. I know Apple had a huge to-do yesterday as well. How we integrate it, how we utilize it, is really the challenge. We have some phenomenal teachers and administrators and staff here in this district, and I see technology as a way to completely complement what they're doing, their knowledge, their organization, their passion in the classroom. The challenge becomes what, what's too much? You know, where do we depend on the technology and fall back on the technology as opposed to use it to supplement and complement the knowledge base and the curriculum that the staff is being charged to, to deliver? Technology can offer an ever-evolving sort of resource to our, our students. A lot of our textbooks and supplemental materials that come on a digital format are updated every three months, every six months. It's a lot cheaper a lot oftentimes than, than buying new textbooks. Think about your civics books and your history books and things like that where those things change so rapidly. Having techno, I mean, access to this kind of technology allows our students and our staff to stay as up-to-date as possible. We talked earlier about, you know, being prepared for what comes next, whatever that looks like, and technology is interwoven into just about anything that all of us do on a daily basis. And getting students and staff, you know, familiar with what technology is doing, what it can do, challenging them, pushing them to think maybe beyond what they can do with a normal pen and paper, allows them to maybe think a little bit more globally, to be prepared for whatever is going to come next.
Thank you very much. Ms. Klug?
How do I believe that technology can be integrated into the classrooms? That's a very broad question because we're talking about educating, you know, from 4K all the way through high school. So obviously, as we know, technology is not going anywhere. As we started to integrate it into our classrooms, it was kind of like trial and error. I think educating is much like the medical field where you kind of have to kind of always practice on getting better, right? It's always going to be an evolution process. We always want to make sure that, you know, we're being as effective as we can with the tools that we have to use. So I think it varies, you know, from how it's used in the classroom all the way up. Obviously, we're raising you to be in a global society. You know, right now, there are corporations that are spread all over the globe, and technology is what links them all together, of being able to communicate with someone, you know, in Hong Kong or China or wherever. I also think that the best part, or the, the best way to use technology in the classroom is for automation purposes. So that if you have students that are, you know, progressing in a certain, you know, in a certain direction, that the teacher can take 15 or 10 of those students and say, okay, I want you to work on this, and with the rest of the group, she can give more individualized learning to where it's needed. So I think that's probably one of the strong, strong aspects of using technology in the classrooms. I guess that's all I have to add.
Thank you very much. Sajeki?
Well, it's, it's funny that currently, I take a course at M A T C Computer, I call it computers for old people. But the person behind me was actually 92 years old, and so she was just a beacon to me that you're never too old to learn. We start integrating technology in kindergarten, and they, I can tell you that at Hoover, they do coding in kindergarten. We use it a great deal. The Achieve 3000 is our reading program, and it, so to speak, teaches kids to read, but one thing it does do is it's remedial, so that a child can read it, and if they didn't understand something, it goes back. And so it's, it's a good program for our elementary. Our math program currently is also computerized, but it's still pen and paper. And so it, so we, we do integrate our computer work into each classroom. I think what it's, when it serves best is when it complements something. When you're taking history or social studies or various courses where in addition to the textbook, you can read and do what you're interested in. And I'm going to use an example. I was at, I got it, at Walker, and each person had a different computerized program that they had on the Revolutionary War. So the fourth and fifth graders used the computers to, to examine what they were going to do, and then they made their murals, and they also did their little YouTube on the program.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
The next question will be asked by Audrey Rolbecky, a sophomore from Nathan Hale, and the first response will be given by Mrs. Emmons.
Hello. What is your favorite West Alice restaurant? Al Pastor, absolutely, 100%. No offense to the rest of the businesses, that's my favorite. I grew up on the south side of Milwaukee and went to a Spanish school, and so I grew up eating nothing but Mexican and Puerto Rican food. So having Al Pastor open in the area, not quite in walking distance, but close enough, if I really, really tried, I could. We were probably there at least once a week. You might be stopping there later tonight to get dinner.
Thank you. Ms. Klug?
This is a really hard one for me because I love them all. I mean, I have some definite favorites. Chef Paz is within walking distance to our home, and I remember, you know, going there just within a few weeks, maybe a month after she had just opened up. And that's always a fun experience. But there have been so many that have opened up since then, that it's just, it's, it's a wonderful place to be right now because we can, as things open, we can explore this one, explore that one. And yeah, we have our favorites. I don't want to leave all of them out, but I guess I'm just going to go with Chef Paz for today.
Thank you. Ms. Sajeki?
Well, if I'm going to look for a steak, I'm going to go to Butch's or a fish fry. Butch's is my favorite for that. If I'm going to have a sandwich, I love the cheese shop on, oh, I forgot, Beecher. And if I'm going to go for a breakfast, I suppose it'd be a toss-up between several different, whether it's Baker's Square or the other one that's down the street. I very rarely go for breakfast, so, but the cheese shop for a sandwich, you can't beat to in Butch's.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz?
If I have to pick one favorite, I'm going to say Kegels.
Oh, yeah.
Made us all very hungry. Thank you.
Simple, Kegels.
Thank you.
The next question will be asked by Holden Skeels, Jr. from West Alice Central, and the first response will be given by Mrs. Klug.
Hello. For the incumbents, what is your single action you are most proud of from your term? For the challengers, what is your primary goal for your next term? Ms. Klug?
Okay, so my primary goal for this term is to improve my communication with the public. I know that this last year, as it's been mentioned in our opening statements already, that things, we know. that things, we know that what happened with the district, and Stephanie kind of shared that and explained a little bit about that. And it really did hit us hard. And I don't know that a whole lot of people understand why all of that happened. And I don't know if they understand what's going to happen when they get their taxes in January. But I've learned of some things from having sat in workshops and communicated with people in the community that there are some things that are coming up next that, you know, just will and just are. And so I'd like to be in that process of opening up honest communication with the community, explaining why these things are the way they are, and making sure that everybody's questions are answered, that they have an opportunity to be a part of what we are now in the position to create and build. So that it's not like we're here making all these decisions without you in your best interest. I think that it really needs to come from the community, from the students, from the parents, from the taxpayers, of what we're really going to create here to make West Alice an attractive place on a whole, right? And that it is a place where you want to be, you want to educate your children because you think that it's going, because you know that it's going to give them the best opportunity in the future in life.
Ms. Sajeki?
What I'm most proud of is Joni Gutke, when she was president to the board, presented Project Lead the Way program for Central. And she wasn't able to get it passed in her tenure. And I, I picked up the ball. And it took three years and three different votes. But I really strived to bring Project Lead the Way to Central. And I'm truly proud of that. The other thing would be U.S. history. I found it unimaginable that a district wasn't teaching a general U.S. history course. We had AP history, but we didn't have a general history course. And I met, I worked on that very hard. And U.S. history is now being taught in our schools. So those are the two that come to mind. But in all the years, I've had a couple of votes that I wish I hadn't voted for and some things that, that I'm proud of. But those are the two that come to mind.
Mr. Schultz?
I'm going to give a broad goal and then a specific goal. My broad goal would be, as I discussed in my opening statement, I want to make sure that every student in the district, regardless of neighborhood school boundary, will have the same opportunities to participate and get started in a CTE program path that meets their interests and abilities. A more, on a specific level, something I hope that I can, we can tackle immediately or something we can maybe move forward with immediately is to utilize some of the talented students we have in our school district to help provide some services in the schools. I'm going to talk about pictures, like Sports Picks. If you've been in the recreation department or your child is in sports in high school, you go through Sports Picks. Nothing against Sports Picks, but some of those packages get pricey. And I don't know if they're any better than some of the student talent we have. When we were at one of the school board workshops, the Hale and Central photography students were showing off their work, and it was phenomenal. Why not tap into them instead of going to a Sports Picks or another company to do photography? Let's bring that student talent in. Let's get them to start taking the photographs of our students for yearbooks, for the sports, you know, for what other venue that we're taking photographs for. And that helps them build a portfolio. And then another thing I'd like to do is utilize the talent with our district to work on technology that the district utilizes. For example, our website, you know, the most recent school board meeting, they presented some information on how much we pay for our website, working in the technology field. I found it a little bit high. I think we can do better with the talent we have in our district.
Ms. Emmons?
That's a great idea. I really like that a lot. I've only been on the board for not quite three years. And truth be told, there's not, at least in the beginning, there wasn't a whole lot to be proud of. Walked into a bad financial situation, things kept getting worse. It was difficult to see where the light was at the end of the tunnel. Finances were bad, went, asked the community for an operating referendum in which the community said no. And I don't blame them based on history of, of where the district had been and what the perception was. If you have to be proud of anything that comes out of that, it's, we managed to make it through a really significant financial crisis without catastrophic impact to the classroom. And while, yes, some, you know, some buildings did lose teachers because our district's enrollment, like many other districts across the state, is down, we managed not to lose what we are aiming to do, which is educate our students. I think that's something to be proud of, that our students' experience in our school district hasn't been compromised because of a dark period that our district had to go through. On a slightly personal level, I'm very pleased of some of the reorganization that was done at the district office that I think was probably overdue. And I'm proud to have been a part of that and to have reorganized in a way that gets us moving forward in a way that we were not suited for in the past. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next question will be asked by Bill Dorro, a sophomore from West Alice Central. And the first response will be given by Ms. Sajeki.
Hello to all. Are our schools trending in the right direction?
Yes, they are. We are, we are on a new path. And the future schools, although I can't tell you exactly what they look like, but we're looking at more hands-on type of things, more hands-on education. We have individualized our education. I went to the GCT projects that were at Frank Lloyd Wright, where all of the elementary schools presented their projects. If you could have seen how advanced some of those were, you would be amazed. Music is alive and well, art is alive and well. We are looking to make some changes. And I think that those are all good changes because they're more individualized. Every year, as we have gotten stronger with our, our personalized surveys for your students, we are able to get an idea of what things that you want to study. What is the direction? Whether the direction is to go on to college or be more vocational. And this, this country needs more vocational workers. And we are looking at that. We are looking at, so to speak, the fab labs that you might have heard about. But all of those things are very important. And we are, we are taking those, studying those, and seeing how we're going to progress with them.
Mr. Schultz?
Most of the schools are trending in the right direction. We still have some schools that have significant challenges that are keeping them back from being able to move forward. The challenge that we face is how can we get those schools that aren't moving forward as fast as other schools? Identifying where we need to make changes, identifying what resources those schools need, in addition to what resources they currently have to help those schools move forward. Overall, as a district, though, the district has looked into some opportunities that have a chance to set us apart from other school districts. There are some partnerships in place, some things that are occurring in terms of the career and technical education that are going to allow our schools to move forward and continue to move in the right direction. But another challenge we face that is, could impact that, is the fact that we have some aging infrastructure. We have several schools that are going to be in need of significant repair. And we, as a district, are going to decide what we are willing to pay or how we are willing to pay to bring some of our schools, just the physical school, to a point that it'll be safe to attend in. And it'll be to the point that it'll allow students and teachers to function.
And Ms. Emmons?
Yes, as a whole, the district is trending in the right direction. We have a better vision. More of the players are on the same path, heading towards the same place. It seems as, you know, in the past with different leadership, that people kind of were siloed in different areas. And over the last couple of years, that's kind of come more together to have a, more of a singular vision. And how we get there is a little different depending on where you are and what your role is and, you know, where you fall. But we're going, we know we need to get here, and we're all working in that direction to get there. To Gary's point, there are certainly some buildings that are farther behind than others, maybe some departments that are farther behind than others. But as a whole, it's moving in the same direction, which is a challenge that some school districts face. We are putting attention in areas that didn't have attention before, like career and tech ed. It's certainly a focal point. Attention to old dilapidated buildings that haven't had attention in the past, maybe the money wasn't spent to keep, for the upkeep. There's attention being paid there. Our leadership has a different goal and a different vision than it has in the past. It's more, let's get the feedback from our, our workers and from our students and from our staff and take that up and use that to help structure what we're doing as opposed to, this is my vision and we're going to go forward with it. So we still have a long way to go. We're, we're not happy and satisfied with where we are today. But we're definitely trending in the right direction. There's a lot of momentum, there's a lot of moving in the right things, a lot of things to be encouraged by. But there's still a lot of work to be done. And the board's work by, by far is certainly not done or easy, so.
And finally, Ms. Klug?
Do I feel that it's trending? Is that what?
Are our schools trending in the right direction?
Yes, definitely. And I can tell you from past experience, I mean, I've got two kids who have graduated, both from Nathan Hale, actually. My son attended Daki his last year. And I know that when my daughter sat down, she planned out her coursework, it wasn't just what she wanted to do as freshmen, it was what she wanted to do, how she was going to plan out the next four years of her life. And at the end of that time, there weren't a lot of the elective courses that are now going to be available for you kids. She didn't have that. It was like, oh, do you want to do art history? It's like, oh, that might be a fun little course for you to do, Gabby. And it certainly wasn't available last year with my son. So, yeah, I mean, you look at all of the elective courses that have been created and all of the hard work in creating, you know, apprenticeships and, and different programs, it's definitely, there's a lot of opportunity here. And I'm excited about it for you kids. Because you're not, you don't care about the aging buildings, right? It's about the curriculum. It's about what do I have access to as a learner? So, yeah, again, I'm, I'm excited for our path. I hope that you, you all find, you know, your direction. And, you know, really take advantage of what's available here. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next question will be asked by Natalie Musak, a sophomore from West Alice Central. And the first response will be given by Mr. Schultz.
Hello. Do you think schools in West Alice, West Milwaukee are safe? And if not, what are you willing to do to improve the safety precautions? Mr. Schultz?
The schools' safety issue is a bit subjective, depending on how we would look at, what level of risk we're willing to accept with our schools. Are the schools safe? In some, in some schools, you know, facilities have been added, for example, at Pershing, they added the addition to make it a different pathway to enter the school. Some schools, while they may have started some things, the safety aspect of it is questionable. West Alice Central, for example, one entrance has some security doors and a little bit more secure. But there's two entrances at West Alice Central that are a lot of glass doors. And you could ask a question, how really safe is that? So from the standpoint of are our schools safe? I think we need to take advantage of some resources that are now available through the governor's bill that he signed that provides, is going to provide grants for schools to do things like school safety studies, analyze the schools. I think we need a professional analysis to come in and determine where, what level of risk we're willing to accept. And based on that level of risk, are our schools safe or not? It's almost impossible to make everything a hundred percent safe. There are just bad people in the world that will do bad things. And sometimes you just can't stop them from doing that, it's just the reality of life. But there are things that we might be able to do depending on how we accept our risk and accept our safety. And study, and then based on the study, plan. And then as a school district, decide how much money, how much resources we'll, we're willing to put into making our schools safe based on our acceptable risk.
Thank you. Ms. Emmons?
I'm actually surprised you waited this long in the program to ask this question. I assumed this was going to be the very first question that you asked. As a school member, we received recently sort of a summary of the school safety law that came from the governor's office. And it is, at this point, what we've received in terms of the writing and how you apply for monies is a hundred percent focused on, at least what we've seen so far, a hundred percent focused on buildings. School safety isn't just about how much you can make a building into a fortress. There's a lot of other things that go into what makes a building safe, what makes a school safe, what makes a district safe. That's, and I'm sorry, this is obviously so personal. That's where we're not putting enough attention, is on the other pieces of this. We can add swipe doors, we can add bulletproof glass, we can add all kinds of things to buildings. And I, we should, I mean, absolutely, if there's money available, we should do everything we can to help make our buildings physically impenetrable. Because wild elk could come through and crash the doors, and we need to make sure that our fab labs aren't being destroyed. There's lots of reasons you need to, you want your doors, you know, your schools to be physically a fortress. But so much of school safety is about how students and teachers feel in the building. Do they feel safe? Do they feel safe from each other? Do they feel safe from themselves? Do they feel safe in their surroundings? Do they feel like they're being challenged? Do they feel like they have the opportunities? And that's where I think we need to put a lot of our attention. The building piece is very, very important. But we have to make sure that our learners and our staff feel connected, that they feel that they have an outlet, that they feel that there are resources for them, and that if they don't, that there are opportunities for them to get connected, whether it's through mental health care, whether it's through reaching out, whether it's through additional resources. But that's where, as a district and as a society, we need to put a lot more focus.
Thank you. Ms. Klug?
Do I feel that the schools in West Alice, West Milwaukee are safe? Yes, I do. I know this because our school district has been very proactive and less, and, and not just reactive. We didn't wait for something to happen and go, oh, I think we should take care of this. And we've continued to do that. There are only two schools in our district right now that don't have one, that don't have one way for you to enter the school. In other words, once everybody's in the building and they've started their school day, if you go to Central, you have to be buzzed in, and the only place you can go is the office. And all of our schools are that way except for two. We started working on that and we ran out of money. So hopefully, this, these grant dollars that have freed up, we'll be able to do that. They were the two schools that, it's a little bit more complicated, it's not an easy solution. And so that's where our priorities were, how many school buildings can we do this? And to keep as much of the community safe. So I think that we've been very proactive. Just recently, the Super Intensive Schools has met with the police force, not just the first shift, the second shift, also the third shift, to make sure that they know where everything is. That if any given time during the day, they were to respond to a situation at a school building, that they would know where, like where the cafeteria is, which is very important. And so he's taken a lot of proactive measures before even having anything handed down to him of, this is what you have to do. Because through that grant, we're also creating an office, right? So whatever that office- So whatever that office tells us to do, we're going to have to react to. So, I don't know, do you guys feel safe here, tonight in this building? I mean, we don't have any of those security measures here, right? We've got one point in, but we're all here. And I feel as safe as sitting in one of my favorite restaurants in the city. We all take risks every day, but hopefully, you guys feel safe when you're in your schools.
Thank you. Ms. Sajeki?
Well, I think you've heard a little bit about what we're already doing, about, we know that our facilities, we've upgraded our facilities, and that started after Sandy Hook. What I, what I really want to emphasize is, first of all, we have police officers stationed at our high schools and our intermediate schools. So we have those as a precaution. But what I, what I'd like to emphasize is something that Stephanie touched on. And that is, at the opening, when we opened up our school district on August 23rd, 2017, the presentation that was given to all of the teachers was on mental health and trauma, trauma-driven or children that have lived under trauma. So many of our students have lived under very traumatic situations, whether it's drugs or incarceration of their, of their family. And we have to address that. That is where we're taking a look at how we can improve the safety of all people, is to help the students, and we are addressing it through Saint A's, St. A, L's, and we, just a number of different things. We do have a comprehensive approach. We do have, we are, buildings and our principals are getting together. As said, our police have gone through our buildings. We are relooking at everything to look at. But students themselves, and how we can better care for their, their situation, their mental health, is paramount.
Thank you.
The next question will be asked by me. And if I didn't mention before, I'm a senior at Hale. Ms. Emmons, you will give the first response. If you could pick one extracurricular activity to join, which one would you choose and why?
I really miss playing softball, so I would love to join a softball team again. I really miss being involved in drama. I would love to join that again. I think where I find the most challenge, and where I think I could have a lot of fun and maybe do something similar, is, you know, the student government angle. I had a lot of fun doing that as well. I guess you can all kind of tell what I did in high school. But there's, there's so many opportu, there's so many new opportunities that are out there. I don't even know all the extracurriculars that you guys have opportunities for that we didn't have when we were in school. But I love the idea of the student government angle, where you can bring different groups together and plan things for the whole school, and meet people from all over the buildings, and engage with the teachers and the administrators, and help to create an experience and an environment. There's something really powerful about having that opportunity and helping to shape your fellow students', you know, experience through a school and through a school year and through, you know, their career in any school. So I guess, after I've said all those out loud, if I had to pick one, I think there'd be a lot of fun and a lot of opportunity, and just a lot of really cool things to get to do at a student government level.
Thank you. Ms. Klug?
Let's see, what extracurricular activity would I like to join? Well, what I miss about my high school years is being part of the place. I'm not a public speaker, and I would never like to try out for a role, but I like being part of the cast. And being there for practices and kind of a support, you know, mechanism. So I guess that would be my thing, is that I would like to, you know, get into doing more plays.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sajeki?
Hands down, music. Music, being part of music, it's a learning, it's teamwork, it's dedication, it's, it's just a wonderful, and it's a lifelong thing that you can live with. Both my sons played the cello, and, you know, the music, that they loved the music, although Andy was first chair cello and was, and loved rap. I couldn't believe he was listening to rap. And he still does every once in a while. The other would be student council. I'd love to be on the student council. I'm really a very political person, in my own little world, in my own living room. And I would love to be on student council, and, you know, if I'd start over, I'd be more assertive. I'm not a particularly assertive person. And I would like to see the student council doing more, stepping up and really making, telling us the changes that they would like to have made, a much better communication. That would be it.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Schultz?
Well, if I have to pick one, and I'll only talk about one, it would be one that currently exists in high school, that didn't exist when I was in high school, and that's Future Business Leaders of America. My son is currently involved in Future Business Leaders of America at Central, and, you know, I see all the fun he has with it, you know, the chance to travel to conferences, the chance, the chance to, you know, be creative, use your imagination when they're doing their, I think it was a business development project they had to do. It forces, it forces students, again, some things I mentioned earlier, like with the well-rounded education, it forces students to develop communication skills, because you have to develop a business plan, you have to be able to commute that, communicate that business plan. And that program, to me, did a lot to get my son, and the people involved in the program, to just become better, you know, become better leaders. People that can, like I said before, people that can communicate, people that can come up with ideas, and take those ideas and try to express those ideas in some way.
Thank you. And the next question will be asked by John Schmidt, a senior from Hale. And the first person to respond will be Mrs. Klug.
How important is a well-performing athletic program to a school? Ms. Klug?
How important is a well-performing?
Yeah, athletic program to a school.
Well, it sure does help in, you know, raising school spirit. I know I attended a private school for high school, and we had an awesome basketball team, and it really did a lot for school spirit. You know, having the rallies and, you know, supporting them as they went on to state and things like that. So I think it has a vital, it has a vital role. You know, for, when I was talking about, you know, understanding who you are, for some of us, we are academic, and we can put our head in a book, but for some of us, there's some other driving force. And for some of us, that's athletics, whether it's football, or basketball, softball, golf, tennis, whatever it might be, speed skating, gymnastics. And so I think that, that it is, it's also part of that well-rounded education, isn't it? Right? To be able to have that outlet with wrestling, or whatever the case may be. So, yeah, I think it does a lot of good, not just for the individuals who participate, but also from just a whole, you know, school, you know, experience, a whole, changes the whole atmosphere of a school.
Thank you. Ms. Sajeki?
It's very important. It connects a student to the, to schools. And surveys will tell you that if a student is connected in some way, they're apt to do much better in, with their grades, academically, I was looking for that word. I will tell you that my son probably would not be a college graduate if he didn't play soccer, and had the soccer team, and they worked as a team. And it gives students an opportunity to be part of a team. And that, I can't stress how important that is, to have teamwork and camaraderie. Now, I was at Central's March Madness, and you watched the joy of the kids as they were a part of the basketball. But it doesn't matter if it's, whatever the sport is, it's the joy. Whether or not they are the number one team, or they're the last team, you know, to a parent, it doesn't matter. It does matter that we have good coaches. And it does matter that the self-esteem of the student is cared for, that his coach never is demeaning, but builds up the self-esteem of a student. But, you know, it also creates a cohesiveness in a school. And when they're looking at, and they talk about the girls' basketball team, or the boys' track team, or the co-ed swimming teams, it's all a good experience. And generally, it's a healthy experience. And it creates a healthier student. Boy, timed that perfect.
Mr. Schultz?
I'm going to answer this in two ways, depending on how we define well-performing. The first way is, I'm going to define well-performing as an athletic program that has kids that participate in the program, they get something out of the program that helps them both as an individual, helps them as a student, helps them become a better person, they're part of a team, and being part of that team makes them part of their school community. Then the school community has good school spirit, you know, the coaches are involved, parents are involved, you build a family, you build a community. So in that sense, it's very important to have a well-performing athletic program that can bring a community together, a community that supports students. Especially sometimes we have students that participate in sports that don't come from the best situations in their, in their home life. And the sports provides them with, you know, in a way, it provides them with a family structure, something they may not have at home. So in that regard, it's very important to have a well-performing athletic program. If we're defining well-performing athletic program as one that is going to be constantly competitive in their conference, in their region, one that wins, that one is harder to say how important it is, because we've seen over the last couple decades, in the state of Wisconsin, I should say, not just the state of Wisconsin, but nationwide, wealth has become one of the most important factors in winning. You look in the state of Wisconsin, teams that are constantly winning in football, basketball, it's the suburbs, wealthy suburbs around Milwaukee, it's the wealthy Fox Valley suburbs, it's the wealthy Dane County suburbs. Those schools, year in and year out, they're competitive in basketball, soccer, football, all the sports. So from a winning perspective, for it to be important, you really have to be willing or able to pour a lot of resources into it.
Thank you. Ms. Emmons?
Sure, I think, I grew up in the state of Milwaukee, as I said, and I went to an MPS school, and I did not go to one of the MPS schools that had well, that had winning athletic teams. So you start to focus on what it does do for your school community, and how it does build a lot of those things, and how positive it can be. Having a well-participated athletic program, having a variety of sports that students can try, that students can get better at, that students can build a sense of family around, is incredibly important. Being an athlete allows you to develop a sense of teamwork, leadership. It allows you to build relationships with coaches and other teachers, people you might not normally have crossed paths with. It builds a sense of pride, not just in the athletes, but also in the school, or can. It can create partnerships and relationships between other staff members that might not normally engage. And it also gives people a sense of accountability, especially if you are an athlete, that if you, you have a responsibility to your teammates, to your coach, to your fans, to your sport, to, to, to be there, to be present, to be engaged. Where I see a lot of value in athletics and having a high participation rate, is building relationships between the parents and getting parents engaged. We struggle with parents staying engaged in schools after elementary school. And athletics is one way that parents can kind of get their, you know, their hands in the school, stay connected to teachers, and connected to their children's friends, and to administrators, and to other parents. I think that's one of the most intangible things that an athletic program can bring to, to that, is, is letting parents get to know each other, and building that sense of community around their students. The whole saying of it takes a village, and I think athletics can help to create and foster that village.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next question will be asked by Joseph Koenig, a junior at West Dallas Central. And the first person to respond will be Ms. Sajeki.
How do you, if appointed to the school board, plan on obtaining and retaining high-performing teachers to the West Dallas School District?
I think the most important thing besides money is to value your teachers. And we don't do enough of that, even though it's one of our stated goals. And we do have a strategic plan, and in that strategic plan is a, an area that, that covers teachers and the school climate. But what's important is to value, to recognize what they have done and what they are doing, to attend their events, to, to say thank you when you see the teachers go over and beyond, and so many of our teachers do. And so, yes, we have an incentive pay that, that we have, and they have their annual raises. Money is very important, and we are a modest income community. And we're always going to be a modest income community. So we're never going to be able to compete with Whitefish Bay, or Homestead, or whatever. But if you truly care about your teachers, and they feel that they are cared about, and you see the wonderful things that they're achieving, and I have been to the science fairs, I've been to the different events, you go to the concerts, or you see the plays, and you see what things are happening here, you have to send it a feel of appreciation for them.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz?
Excuse me. For this question, I've, it's something I've talked about in the past, is, and Sue has touched on it, is that from a wealth standpoint, there are other school districts in the area that, you know, quite frankly, are wealthier. They're going to be in positions where they can offer more in terms of salary to teachers. So when we look at this, we should look at it with the understanding that there are always going to be a group of teachers that are going to be attracted out of our district. And you're going to have teachers that are going to come into the district, and there should be an expectation, these teachers, as I've mentioned in the other forum, we're going to be a stepping stone. They're going to use us, they're going to work really hard, four or five years, and then they're going to move on. So we know we're going to have populations of teachers within the district that just aren't going to stay in the district. So then the question becomes, how do we take the teachers that we know want to remain in the district? Teachers that aren't going to be as concerned about salary, though everybody's concerned about salary? We need to get those teachers as involved as we can in building programs within the schools. We almost need to have a bottom-up approach where the teachers can set, can become more involved in setting goals for their schools, get more involved in determining how curriculum is built, how the academics are set up in the schools. We need to find that type of way to allow our teachers to participate more, understanding that these teachers aren't necessarily in it for the money, they're in it for the kids, they're in it for what they can contribute to make our push forward to become a better school district successful.
Thank you. Ms. Emmons?
We have to listen to our, to our teachers. Our greatest line item in our budget is our- Our greatest line item in our budget is our salaries, right? And so, we, they're the bread and butter, they're everything. If we don't have quality teachers, if we don't have people who want to be in the classroom, who are engaged, who connect with the students, who connect with parents, then this district is nothing. I mean, we have to make sure that our teachers have what they need. Pay is obviously an issue. And I think you ask everybody in this room, you know, would you like to make more money? They'd all say yes. Always say yes, if somebody asks you that, yes, you want to make more money. We have to make sure they have resources available to them. You know, we talk about 21st century learning, we talk about getting ready for the future, talk about what's out there. You have to have the tools to do that. And so, you can't hold teachers to an unrealistic expectation, to deliver a goal and not give them any utensils to build it. We have to make them feel safe. We've touched on that earlier. And that's all different levels of feeling safe. We have to make them feel valued. They're important people, they're people. We need to make them feel that way. We have to listen to them. When they have concerns, when they have questions, when they have feedback and opinions, we need to listen to that, you know, to actually listen to it. Take that information and use it to structure what we are as a district, and how we attack teachers, how we retain teachers, how we give teachers the flexibility in their classrooms to actually educate our students. We have to communicate with them. We have to let them know where we're going, and why we're going there, and how they can be a part of it. And not a mandate, but this is our district, and you are a huge part of this. You have to be able to communicate back and forth. They have to have a channel to communicate to the district, and to their buildings, and to their families, and their students. And then, the district and the buildings and the families have to wait to communicate to them. And it has to go both ways. And if all of those things can be done, at least in some level of moderation, I think that your retention and your attraction become, it's not a problem anymore. I think the teachers that are here want to stay here, and others want to come here.
Thank you so much. Ms. Klug?
I agree with Stephanie. I know that our initial starting salary for new teachers is a little bit more, and more competitive than what other districts can offer. I know that we have lost some veteran teachers, but not unlike any other district. I know that in order to preserve them, districts have done things, like write their benefits right into their board policy, and they're still leaving. So, this is a challenge that not only our district has, but all districts have. But as Stephanie said, I think that what we've done is we've identified leadership within our educational community. We've offered them supplemental contracts, and also additional responsibility in helping us create our strategic plan, and becoming leaders for, that maybe weren't defined in a school before. And that helps a lot. Because then we've got that one person in the school who can help, you know, bring up everybody else. I think that some of the things that we've had to do, which have been good things, like automation through Skyward, has kind of brought down a little bit of the morale amongst teachers. And I think that that's something that's very important for them to understand, that that wasn't our intention. It was a huge money saver for our district. And it will, once it's up and running, will work wonderfully. There are two trainers in every school, at least two trainers. And so, if they don't know something called, shoot, I forgot what it's cloning, that's going to help them save some steps in some of the things that they have to do. But I think that what we've tried to do in this last year, after we've overcome a lot of the, and a lot of the hard work that the board had to do, and cutting, and cutting, and cutting, that we've finally gotten everybody kind of rowing in the same direction. And as the last year ended, they kind of realized, well, where am I? What did I have to do to be able to be recognized for that position, or that role in school? Now, they're like, okay, I'm all in. Let me go ahead and see what I can contribute, sorry. Spoke a little long there.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. And as we move to the 10th question, in the interest of time, your responses will now be limited to one minute. Hannah Compass, our timekeeper, will hold the 30-second sign at the halfway mark. So, with that being said, the 10th question will be asked by Holden Skeels, a junior from Central. And Mr. Schultz will give the first response.
Hello. After previous financial missteps, how will you work to regain the trust of the community?
I think for this situation, and I think it's starting to happen, we need better communications from the finance director and the district administration. We have a new finance director in place. And in talking to some school staff, they feel that he's already been, doing a better job. The staff I've talked to have said they feel he does a better job of communicating with them on what's in their budget, what's available, how he communicates it to them. So, I think we are right now taking a good first step in having a communication director that is, and is willing to work to change the way he communicates. One of previous board meetings, he presented some information on the budget. The school board asked him for more detail, and he's going to go back and give the school board more detail. One of the other things I'd like to see to promote that even further, though, is to have better communications from the district being pushed out to the general public to get a better idea of how the budget works, and how the budget moves forward.
Thank you. Ms. Emmons?
Absolutely. There's been a lot of movement on this in the last couple of years. It's safe to say that most people didn't trust the school board any further than they could throw them a couple of years ago. And I think we've made some strides to fix that. I think we've done a better job of starting to be, to have more communication, to be more transparent, to be more accessible. Great, now we did that. Now, what do we do, right? We have to deliver. If we say we're going to do something, we're going to do it. If we're going to launch something, or ask for feedback, again, we have to listen, but we have to be transparent with what that looks like. So, we've built this momentum going forward of, yes, we're starting to communicate more, and we're starting to, you know, be who we say we are, and delivering on these things. But now, we have to go farther. We have to have more access to district leadership and board members. We have to have more visibility in the general public. There has to be more levels of communication. We're a lot better than we were a couple of years ago, but there's still a lot of work to be done. And I think if we can deliver all those things, then I think slowly but surely, as we deliver on all of this, we can slowly gain some of the trust back.
Thank you. Ms. Klug?
Actually, I think I touched on this a little earlier. It's just a general understanding of the difference between when you go to work, or if you own your own business, that, you know, you're in it for the profit. We are a nonprofit, we're here to provide a service. And although we've been through some challenges, I think that we've really done a lot of hard work and got dug in. And it's going to create, we're already seeing change. I mean, even by moving some of our leadership around from different buildings, I mean, what Jeff Taylor has done at Central over this past year, and his staff underneath him, is just amazing. But as far as, you know, going forward, just to let everybody know, we're starting a parent survey tomorrow, which will run for three weeks. So, please go online and fill that out. That feedback is going to be very, very important to us. And also, on the 25th, I believe, we're going to be holding something called a Parent Advisory Circle. So, the first topic for that meeting, and that will start at 7:45 in the seventh floor, in room 710. So, for about an hour and 15 minutes, is going to be strategic, how we move forward with our strategic plan. So, if there are any community members who would like to participate in that, please join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sajeki?
It will be difficult to regain the trust. We made some, what ended up to be poor decisions, but we made the best decisions that we could at the time. They turned out to be economically devastating. We've worked very hard to repair those poor decisions. And we won our lawsuit and got our OPEB money back. We worked very hard, and we worked so hard at getting our money back, that the state thought that we had too much money, and took away some of our state funding. But, so, it's a no-win sometimes. But communication, transparency and communication will be the best way. And eventually, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Our next question will be asked by Cody Nelson, a sophomore from West Dallas Central. And the first response will be given by Mrs. Emmons.
What is your perception of teacher and staff morale?
I think it depends on the day that I ask, and the building, and the particular person that I'm asking. In general, I think the morale is better than it was a few years ago. I think it's higher on a Friday than it is on a Monday, and I think it was probably really high today. I think the staff is starting to understand that they're not in this alone. That they have resources and leadership that supports them, and wants them to be happy, and productive, and engaged. And that does a lot for morale. That hasn't trickled through all the way through the district yet. We'd be fools to think that it was. But I think, in general, the district staff knows that we have a vision, we are moving that direction. We are using their feedback to help guide it, and we will listen to them if we get off path. Okay, there we go, done.
Thank you very much.
So, what is my perception of staff and morale?
Staff and teacher morale.
Oh, staff and teaching morale. Yeah, like Stephanie said, it probably varies from day to day. You know, attending the workshops that I have, and being exposed to the best of the best of what we have to offer in the district, I see a really, a real good energy there. I have not been able to be inside a school building. I don't have any children who are currently attending school. I hope to do that if I become on board, so that I really do have a better handle of what's going on in different school buildings with different principals. And hopefully, we can come to, you know, creating some solutions there if morale is low. But I think that, for the most part, we really, we do have staff that helps each other out. You know, our veteran staff that are in our buildings understand that new teachers may need some direction, and they are certainly more than willing to help them. And so, I think that really aids a lot in just making it through the week, making it through, you know, a quarter, making it through your first year as a new teacher. So, I don't know what else to say. Thank you for the question.
I know that we've gone through a difficult time, and staff morale was low. And it was reasonably low. We had, we, the funds weren't there. We had to cut staff, we cut administration. We changed administration to a new superintendent. We have, under his leadership, we've created a strategic plan that I commented about. And in that strategic plan, there is definitely an employee area which says, "We will build and support our team through clear, timely, transparent communication, effective relationships, and professional development." And through those things, I believe that we will improve our staff morale through learning, and listening, and being, and sticking to the strategic plan.
Mr. Schultz?
On the surface, it looks like morale seems to be good overall. But I don't know about the current school board members, or Christine, but I've had situations where teachers have pulled me aside privately, and I'm going to, you know, obviously rename, remain anonymous. In their situation, it's not that good. Their morale isn't that good. We have, I think we have a problem in the district that we need to address where, in situations where morale is not that good, teachers are afraid to talk. They're afraid of ramifications from people in the district office. And we need to find a way to address that. I told people, I told teachers, one of the things I'd like to do if I'm a school board member is find a way to have, and I did this in my previous jobs, is what is said in this room stays in this room. We need to, we need to find a way to gather the information from teachers in the areas where their morale is low, and they're afraid to talk. And it does exist, and we have to address it.
Thank you for your answers.
And just a quick reminder, when you see the red card, you must stop after that so we can stay on time here. The next question will be asked by Bill Doral, a sophomore from Central. And the first person to respond will be Mrs. Klug.
Hello again. What is your favorite ice cream and memory involving ice cream? Ms. Klug?
Goodness, what a great question. That's really hard. When I was growing up, I think just chocolate and vanilla were fun. But now, there's so many other flavors. And I particularly like the kind with like all the candy, like the chocolate, and the nougat, and the, you know, so that like every bite is a little different. As far as my, my ice cream memory, just sitting down at the kitchen table with all my brothers and sisters. And you know how you just take your spoon, and you kind of just make ice cream soup, right? So that you could eat it a little faster, and it wouldn't freeze your brain? That's my favorite memory.
Ms. Sajeki?
Butter pecan. And if I could, I'd have turtle sundaes. Those are my favorite. And what is my fond memory? I'm so old that I can remember when freezers were about this big in your refrigerator. And so, you'd have this little package of ice cream. And we had five children. And we all shared that little package of ice cream. And it was wonderful. And that's, that's my fond memory.
Mr. Schultz?
As with Sue, my favorite is butter pecan.
Oh, wait, some pecan coming.
That's awesome. My favorite ice cream memory is the first time our family, my wife, and myself, and our two children, there was a place in the Dells. I can't remember the name of the ice cream place in the Dells, but it had all sorts of candy, and they almost had, I don't know, 50 flavors of ice cream. And it was like, the kids were so excited, like, oh, I get butter, you know, bubble gum ice cream, and it was great.
Ms. Emmons?
Sure. My favorite ice cream is custard, and it's infinite chocolate from Big Deal Burgers and Custard, not far from here, probably my second favorite West Dallas restaurant. When the new owners took over at Big Deal, they created infinite chocolate. And it's, I'm a chocolate junkie, it has brownies, and Oreos, and fudge, and all kinds of wonderful things in it. And I got to know the owners, and they knew this was my favorite ice cream. So, a couple of years ago, on my birthday, on their printed calendar, on my birthday, it had infinite chocolate, and it said, "Happy Birthday Stephanie Emmons, you're a big deal to us." And I have that on my refrigerator at home, I have a copy of it on my desk at work. And we go there for just about everything. I love taking people there. I love when I, you know, my son gets so excited that we get to go, "Oh, we're going to Big Deal tonight." You know, he gets so excited about that, it's such a nice treat. And it's a place for a lot of us to gather, and get together, and have meetings, and other things. But they didn't, they had infinite chocolate earlier in March, which means they won't have it in April. So, I'll have to wait till May, till it comes back.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I'll be asking the next question, and the first person to respond will be Ms. Sajeki. What are you willing to do to get students that meet expectations to meet higher performing levels?
What am I willing to do to get students to?
I'll read it one more time.
Okay.
What are you willing to do to get students that already meet expectations to meet higher performing levels?
You absolutely have to have an interest. That teacher has to be interested in the student. And the student has to believe that the teacher is interested in them. And if that, if they have a true relationship where they are working together, the sky is the limit. So, I really think it's communication between, our teachers are the most important part of your education. And when they touch upon what you're interested in, I believe that you will set the bar higher.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz?
First thing I would do is find out what is stopping the student from meeting those higher expectations. And finding out, in some cases, it could be a student's home life. They just, their home life is in such disarray, they come from a bad home, a broken home. And for them, the opportunity to meet higher expectations may not exist. They don't have the support structure in place. So, then, how do we, as a school district, So then, how do we, as a school district, provide that support, support structure for those students? For some students, it might, it might be, how do you entice a student that has a good home life, and for some reason, just they're satisfied with where they are? I don't know if there's anything we should do with those students, other than, you know, this is where you are, because we have limited resources, and I would like to take those resources and help those who truly are in need, who could use those resources to meet better expectations.
Thank you. Ms. Emmons?
We have to find motivation. What motivates students to go to that next level? I deal with that at work all the time, trying to get my team to be motivated to get to that next level of success. And it's gonna be different for everyone. Our district has a, a lot of experience doing, you know, with personalized learning and finding out how we can adjust the, the curriculum and adjust the, the experience for individual students. We have to continue to retain the teachers that are making connections to the students to help provide those levels of motivation. We have to offer extracurricular activities to get kids engaged in, in topics and exposure that they, they wouldn't have otherwise. We have to find out what obstacles are in their way, and we have to provide resources to them to overcome those obstacles and to be supportive of them when they need our help. As a board, our, our, our job then is to make sure that the, the tools are in place and the staff are in place and the resources are in place to accomplish all those things and offer those extra opportunities and that motivation to the students that want it, need it.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Klug?
Boy, this is a big one, because I think a lot of parents would like the answer to this one, wouldn't they? You know, and you have a student who has the aptitude to learn, and then they're like, "Ah, you know, I got it. I got it in the bag, I got, you know, these next six credits, my senior year, and, you know, that's it, that's all I wanna do." And they don't become, they don't take more of the advantage of what's available to them. In my case, with my son, I wished I had had the answer to this question because he was such a bright kid. But unfortunately, I don't know, something happened, you know, and hopefully he'll pick up the ball and do that, but all I can say is, if I had it to do over again, I suppose I'd do something different, you know, like encourage and maybe more, give, maybe give him more confidence. But I just don't know that he had the tools that, you know, for the direction of where he wanted to go with his life available to him. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be asked by Letitia Balderas, a senior from Daki, and the first person to respond will be Mr. Schultz.
What would you do to make all schools perform at a higher level?
To try to make all schools perform at a higher level? I think, I think what we need to do is, we have some schools that perform at a higher level already, so I don't think I'd focus as much on those. We need to take our limited resources and focus on those schools that we need to bring up. Schools that are in, in school boundaries where parents are open and rolling out. So those are the schools we need to take, make those schools better, and try to get those open enrollment, um, parents, open enrollment students, bring them, to bring them back into the district. So I think from an overall perspective, I don't think I would focus on making every school perform better. We need to identify schools that definitely need to perform better and to make those schools more attractive for our residents in the, in the district.
Thank you. Mrs. Evans?
It comes down to, you know, resources and time. There are some schools and districts that are really high performing already, and their experience and their successes should help direct some of the other schools and, and help to motivate them and help to get them to a different level as well. Now, it's not one size fits all, and that's what the beauty of, of having multiple schools in the district is as well, is that, you know, there is room for personalization and there is room for schools to find their own identity based on their individual community and their neighborhood and what those parents want and what those residents want and what those students want. But we have some really great tools already in the district, and we need to utilize those in areas where we feel that other areas are under, underperforming. Again, if we have this vision of where we need to go, then we, as a district, have to ensure that those, that everything is being given to the buildings and the teachers and the administrators to help bring those buildings and those students up to the level that we expect them to be.
Thank you. Mrs. Klug?
How would I make all schools perform at a higher level?
Yes.
Okay. Gosh, if it wasn't for that little bobble that we had with all the financial stuff, because in 2015, 2016, I don't know if you guys were aware of this, but eight of our schools in West Dallas, West Milwaukee School District were in the, among the list of Wisconsin Schools of Recognition. We were out of the top 25 percent. So, there were only three schools. Now, I think when they changed the standard, that didn't qualify. I think this, there was a silver was the highest that they were giving out, and then there were some bronze schools. And only two or three of our schools made the bronze level. So, there are still great things happening here. So, I think we'll just continue on that path.
What we can do, and what we are doing, is we have teacher committees. We have teachers that work across the district, that connect with each other and are able to talk about the successes and failures of different programs or different means of, of their lesson plans. And when you have teachers that are able to work together, and we do have teachers that, that go on and they go to different workshops and what have you, and then they come back and they are the teachers of teachers. But when we are, when all of the teachers at a different grade level or a different subject level are able to talk to one another and work with one another, they will, that's how we will improve the education for all schools.
Okay, thank you.
The next question will come from Audrey Robecky, a sophomore from Nathan Hale, and the first candidate to respond will be Ms. Emmons.
What changes are you willing to make to improve the attendance of Central and Hale?
Well, I could go pick 'em up every day. I would be happy to do that. A lot of it comes down to getting the parent buy-in. If, if parents aren't getting their kids to school in elementary school, they're not gonna get their kids to school in high school when either they're walking themselves or they're taking the city bus. We have to build that at an early level. And we, you know, and that is one of the focuses this last year, but we also have to give students, we have to more clearly define the reasons why they have to be there, why they should be there, why they want to be there. And that's a communication issue, that's a perception issue, that's a feeling safe and comfortable and engaged and valued proposition as well, that maybe we're not doing that well enough, maybe that's something that our administration and our teachers need to do better at. I think a lot of it does come down to, if it's important to the parents, it's gonna wind up being important to the students, in most cases. I know that's not a universal truth, but we need to be stronger there. We need to get kids to school in kindergarten and first grade and sixth grade, and we'll get the kids to school in high school. Oh, my turn?
Yeah.
I got, I got the sign, so, yeah.
Oh, okay. What changes am I willing to make to increase children's attendance? You know, when you look back at your own school career, you can always pick at least one or two teachers that you were so thrilled to be in their classroom with. And I hopeful, hopefully, there's at least one teacher that a student can connect with. You know, I think that it's important for, for staff to understand that, you know, learning your children's names, you know, in the first couple of weeks of school, and then, you know, two months later, when you finally see that kid for the first time, it's like, "Oh." To let them know that they're important, that they're valued, that being in the building and being engaged in education is something that is only gonna benefit them. I mean, that's why they're there, right? So, yeah, hopefully, just to find something that they wanna look forward to, that they wanna get to school and say, "Oh, I can't wait, but I have to do this first before I can go to third period where my favorite math teacher is."
Thank you. Ms. Subjackey?
That is very hard to do. Our schools work very hard at the early levels, kindergarten and first grade, for attendance. We have principals that actually go out to students' homes and pick their, their students up. We know that in some cases, it's a financial difficulty where some students are caring for younger siblings or what have you. We, we, some are mental health, and we were working hard with that. But the best is communicating both to the parent and the student the value of education. And I'm not sure that all people are valuing the education, the, the much-needed education.
Mr. Schultz?
I guess trying to look at a carrot and a stick approach. The state, there are state laws that have to be followed in terms of attendance. If you don't meet, if you don't meet the attendance requirements, there are supposed to be penalties for that. So I, I'd first like to find out how both schools are, what they're doing, if they're applying the penalties that they are allowed to apply, kinda, you know, a stick approach, you know? You, you're not meeting attendance requirements, there's a law, you have to meet this law. If you're not meeting it, you're, you're gonna be penalized. See if we're actually doing that. The carrot approach, you know, what do we give? What incentives do we give to get, get students who aren't attending to attend? I don't know. As Sue mentioned, there could be demographic issues, there could be situations at home as to why students can't attend. So that, that part I don't know. But the stick approach, see how we're not, maybe not penalizing students that need to be penalized.
Thank you.
The next question will be asked by Van Kleinschmidt, a junior from Central, and the first person to respond will be Ms. Klug.
What is your vision to revitalize or replace aging buildings within West Dallas, West Milwaukee?
What is my vision to replace them?
Or revitalize.
Or revitalize them. Okay. Wow, I don't know, wave a magic wand and come up with a big pot of money? You know, I mean, I'd love to offer you kids, you know, the best of the best as far as, you know, facilities and, you know, let's, you know, take out your dream list of what it, what it is. But I think that we also have invested a lot into the buildings that we have. I think that it's really less about what it looks like than more, is it really functioning well for a learning environment? So, aging buildings, I wasn't really on that committee, I don't really know where we stand on a lot of the issues with our buildings. I know that it's, I've heard that it's going to cost a lot to, you know, the upkeep and all of that. I think that our board in the past year have done, has helped relieve some of that by passing the energy efficiency thing, even though some of the community may not understand that. That's money that's set aside in a separate account, and it has to be used for that purpose. Thank you.
Ms. Su Jackie?
We have some really old schools. They are older than I am. And they, we have schools that are 91 years old, 88 years old. Nathan Hale is one of the young ones at 53 years old. It's amazing when you look down and you think that Parkway was built in 1939. So you're asking, what are we going to do? Well, I've been part of that committee, and the, the two schools that are most urgent happen to be Central and, I believe, Jefferson. And we are, we have a architects that have come in to take a look at what will it cost to, to repair it or to, to take a look at how to do whatever needs to be done. And we are also looking at what the cost would be at Jefferson. So we are addressing those.
Mr. Schultz?
As far as, as this question goes, you know, there was a facilities committee that was put together to study the facilities. Unfortunately, I, I asked to be on that committee, and I never got a response from the former finance director, and my understanding is that committee hasn't met in over a year, so I don't know what, what, where they're at in terms of looking at studies on, on the situation with the schools. But with the limited, again, with limited money we have, we need to look at prioritizing needs over wants. I'll go back to last year's energy efficiency vote. It's, there were some definite needs, there were some things that needed to be replaced, mechanicals that needed replaced to improve energy efficiency. And then there were the wants. LED lighting, I would've said LED lighting was more a want than a need, and that, to me, was a missed opportunity with the community in that we, we went after something, I don't know if we really needed to go after it, but we need to do a better job of prioritizing our needs.
Ms. Emmons?
Exactly that, we need, we need to prioritize. So the buildings didn't all become 85 years old overnight, and they're not going to be all replaced and repaired overnight either. So it's about really looking, you know, and again, the facilities committee hadn't, hasn't met in some time, and that does have to be revitalized. The former architect recently passed away, and so the committee apparently has a new architect and will be getting going again shortly. But we have to figure out where we have to put money first. Are there safety issues, first of all? Are we worrying about roofs collapsing or walls falling down or things like that? And that's where the needs have to go. And then you have to have a plan. You can't just throw money at a building and say, "Okay, this one needs this, or this one needs that." There has to be a plan. And that has to be, you know, reviewed and approved before any, anything is gonna be done. But so long as that is in place and there is a definite approved, reviewed, continued to be checked and double-checked and rechecked plan as to how to bring some of these buildings up to the 21st century, or at least prevent them from getting, falling over, then we're in better shape.
Thank you.
The next question will be asked by Cody Nelson, a sophomore from West Dallas Central, and the first candidate to respond will be Ms. Jackie.
Do you have an opinion as to why 840 district students have decided to enroll in other districts, and what is your plan to stop students from leaving?
Yes, we do have about that, about 700, 700-plus students leaving. We also have more students that wanna come here. So I think we have about 1,100 students that want to attend our schools. What can we do to prevent that? Well, I'm gonna use an example of Mitchell School. And that principal called every open enrollment student, parent, the household, "Talk to them, and do you know that every single one of them changed their mind and transferred back to Mitchell?" So we just need a better outreach program.
Mr. Schultz?
For this question, in, in our community in West Milwaukee where I'm at, when I went out and took out signatures, I was, you know, kinda shocked at the number of people I found who were open and rolling out. And for me, it comes down to making sure we have consistency among our boundary schools. We need to have a situation where regardless of what boundary school you're in, you're gonna have an opportunity, as I mentioned in my opening statement, that you have an opportunity to participate in a CTE program. Without those kinds of opportunities, if I'm in a boundary school and I don't have an opportunity to participate in some kind of CTE program that's in another elementary school, and I have the opportunity to open and roll out, I'm gonna open and roll out. So we have to provide opportunities for every, everybody in this district in some fashion.
Mrs. Emmons?
We've lost a lot of students, a couple different reasons. One, we were in a financial mess, and people didn't wanna be part of that anymore. They wanted a different opportunity for their family. We lost students because they, they graduated, and there's a decrease in student, eligible students, it's across the state. We're losing people because we don't have some of the specialization that other districts have. We need to make sure that we have consistency across all of our schools, across the entire district from east to west. We need to continue to build and develop the trust that we mentioned earlier, and if people trust and believe in this district, then they're gonna wanna send their students here. They're gonna wanna move here and have their children enroll. And we need to have opportunities. It can't, you know, it's, it's not, education isn't one size fits all, it's not the same for everyone, it's not gonna look the same for everyone. We have to be able to be flexible to offer different opportunities so that families get what they need out of being educated by the West Dallas, West Milwaukee School District.
Mrs. Klug?
840, I thought it was higher over the last three years. Is that just this, oh, never, I won't ask you a question. We can only guess, because we don't exit poll families- We can only guess because we don't exit poll families who leave us. So if they're choosing to open, roll out, then all I can say is they probably have found an avenue for their learner that is going to address their, the educational needs of their children. It may have been for financial issues, it may have been everything that you've heard already, we, we just don't know. I know that we had neighborhood schools when my children were attending, and then they said, oh, you can open it up, which I was really excited about because with my children, they always excelled at school. And so I wanted to place them around other kids who, that was their main objective, is being in a classroom to learn. Otherwise, they would have ended up going to Central, and at that time, I don't know, to me, there was just a definite difference. We have some great things happening in our school district, and I think that's one of the reasons why we decided to open it up, to, to say to a parent, you know, if you know specifically that your son or daughter wants to follow this path, then perhaps this school is better for them than their neighborhood school.
Thank you for your answer.
The final question tonight will be asked by Dane Bauer, a sophomore from West Alice Central. And Ms. Emmons will start the responses.
What superhero would you choose to be and why?
Oh, man, we just got our Marvel Loot Crate box today at home. It was all X-Men themed. You would, might be surprised how often we have this conversation at my house. Wow. Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't say Wonder Woman because I grew up idolizing Wonder Woman, what little girl really didn't. But the outfit, not, not, nothing, outfit's a no-go. I don't know, that's, that's really tough. I really liked a lot of the characters in Black Panther, and I think I could identify with some of them. I think you almost have to go tied and, tried and true and stick with Captain America. Strong ideals, values, willing to fight for what he believes in, good team player, nice outfit, costume, you know, no cape and everything, not going to get stuck in an engine. So, yeah, I think I'm going to have to go with, with Captain America.
Ms. Klug.
Yeah, I'm with Stephanie. I mean, I only grew up with Wonder Woman, and I can honestly tell you, I have never thought about this question. So I really don't have a good answer, other than, yeah, I was exposed to Wonder Woman and I'm with Stephanie, and there's no way you're getting me in that, in that costume. I mean, it's not like I'm going to do it for Halloween or anything. That's my answer. Thank you.
Ms. Jacki.
I'm sorry, I don't have a superhero that I would want to be. I, you know, I, I find that most of the movies of superheroes are a little too violent for my taste. And so although I'd like to jump tall buildings with a single bound, I suppose I'd like to be Superman or Superwoman. I don't know if Superwoman was able to do all the things that Superman could do. So although I've never wanted to be a male, I'd be Superman.
Mr. Schultz.
Well, I was going to say Superman's my, my favorite because of the fact I have like 20 Superman t-shirts at home. I just like the character of Superman, you know, like other superheroes, you know, it's a character, you know, it's a superhero that, you know, has virtual and has a lot of, you know, things that we like to see out of people. But the other thing about Superman is he has a weakness, and he has somebody always trying to exploit his weakness, kryptonite. You know, you have Lex Luthor, he knows Superman's weakness. And as human beings, we all have weaknesses. And sometimes we find people that try to exploit our weaknesses. So to me, it's, it's a character that you can kind of relate with, in that he has that one thing that most people have and tries to get exploited.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry I lied before, but we have one final question that, that a commissioner feels very strongly about, so she'll ask it.
Oh, no. Cecilia.
So, my question for you is, where have the district calendars that display the student art within the district gone? And do you plan to bring them back for next year?
If you're talking to me, the, the student art is in a, a calendar, and I have that calendar. I, I just can't off the top of my head tell you, I think it was the Fair Housing that produced the calendar. But I know that it was produced by the, it was a citywide or school-wide, because it included all of our schools, calendar, and it, there is a calendar.
Mr. Schultz.
Well, I guess maybe there is, there isn't a calendar, but if there isn't a calendar...
I just want it back.
If there isn't a calendar to bring it back, I don't know the history of the calendar, maybe the calendar was costing the school district money and they decided they didn't want to continue to put forth money to bring it back. Then you could bring it back in a, in a pre-order fashion where somebody would have to pre-order, prepay for the calendar, and then they get the calendar, and then you could bring it back. As long as there's no cost to the district.
Wait a minute. I, I don't think I used all my 30 seconds. We don't have a district calendar that lists all of the activities. We do have a calendar that shows the artwork. So I wasn't sure which calendar you're talking about.
The one that the students got every year in the beginning of the year, like during open enrollment, and it displayed the artwork of each student, like for each month, and I really liked that calendar, so where is it?
We'll make sure you get one next year.
Yay. Ms. Emmons, do you have a response?
I, I have one of these. It doesn't have the activities on it, but it has the art, because March is hanging in my office, and I think it's a little girl from Irving or Jefferson, that's March. I don't know, I never, it just, when my son was in elementary school, one day it would show up in his folder, and I'd bring it home and we'd put it on the refrigerator. And even as a school member, that's how I would get it, it would come home one day at school. I don't know how I got this version of it. I don't think it's super secret, and I don't think I had to pass any tests or anything to get it. But I don't know how it was distributed, but I know it was just art and it wasn't the activities. But I think you've given us all something to, for homework, so that we can get back to you on, because we should get homework too.
And Ms. Klug.
I do, I remember this way back when the kids were just, you know, in elementary school, so I don't know if it's something we got away of, it's probably because you're a board member, you got one.
I don't know why I got one. It's in my office.
But like she said, I guess, you know, it's homework. I think that part of the reason why we maybe got away from it is because there's no, an automated system to do it, but if it's something that we were doing, I kind of like Gary's idea of it maybe, you know, being more cost-effective, yeah, for sponsorship and maybe creating some scholarships through doing that as well. It would be nice, just see.
Thank you for your responses.
Okay, so good ideas with the calendar. Okay, so each of you will now have two minutes to give your closing statements, starting with Ms. Klug and going back to the left.
Okay. So I didn't take as much time in the beginning, I just wanted to finish up by saying that I have done some volunteer work with my kids in the school, you know, first starting out with the spark bags, reading to kids, things like that. Also volunteered as a co-president of the PTA, and that was fun work. Unfortunately, there was a drastic change in our family life, our family structure. And after deciding to stay, stay here, I had to take myself away from all of that. And so now that my kids are graduated and I've taken myself out of the computer, 10 years ago, I was able to attract a wonderful man to my life who's been my rock. We're engaged and getting married this summer, and this has allowed me the time to be able to give back to the community in a way that I thought, or I wished I would have had when I was, when my kids were in school, to be part of every PTA, PTS, you know, all the events and things like that. This is going to allow me a way to be able to do something that I believe in in advocating for children's education, and I'd like to create some success stories for you guys. So I hope that the district will allow me to borrow you so that I can advocate for your futures. I only want the best of things to happen, and I hope that with my past work, work experience that I can bring that skill set to the board with some creative ideas, some, I don't want to say strategic things, but maybe some creative things of how we can handle different situations as they come up, as time goes forward. So I thank you all for your questions, they were really good. I especially love the one about the ice cream, because that kind of really helped break it up for me and actually, you know, get back to just speaking from my heart and just talking to you like, we're not, you're not like a firing squad or something. So, thank you.
I don't remember where I was going to start. We've made a lot of progress in the last couple of years. We've kind of come out of a really tough time and we're, we see a little bit of the light and we're moving in a positive direction. But we're not there yet. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done, a lot of work with our buildings and with our staff and with our students and with curriculum development and all kinds of areas. I didn't realize how complex managing a school district was until you're actually elbow-deep in it. As I mentioned earlier, I spent the first couple of years on the school board trying to fix. And by fix, we had to cut. And now it's time to create, now it's time to move forward, now it's time to leave that chapter behind and to begin to build what we want as our vision for the school district and for our students. I want to thank all of you on the youth commission, I think you guys did an amazing job tonight. I was way more nervous than I think I've been at an event like this in a really long time. But I wish you all the best of luck as you finish up your school year and get ready for whatever lies ahead for you. You guys are why we do what we do. You guys make us proud and you're the reason why we're sitting in front of you today. So I want to say thank you to all of you very much.
Well, I want to thank the City and the Youth Commission for holding the form and giving the candidates the chance to present our views on the issues that are important to the district. I'm going to start with a quote by one of my favorite NBA coaches, former coach Chuck Daly, two-time NBA champion with the Detroit Pistons, who would define himself as a pessimist, and somebody asked him what that meant, and he defined it as an optimist with experience. And I'd like to say, we, the district has a lot to be optimistic about. The financial situation is under control, you know, we see the light at the end of the tunnel, and we now have the cobalt, cobalt development on 70th Street and some potential partnerships between the school district, MATC, and business partners that are going to provide an opportunity for our district to differentiate themselves, differentiate us from other school districts in the region. And we see that in certain schools, school staff are taking initiative to create new educational opportunities for their students. But we do have challenges that lie ahead. We need to get to a point where open enrollment out of the district is minimal. We need to use our resources to make sure that every neighborhood school is a school that parents want to attend, want their kids to attend, and that those schools provide the economic or academic program to fit the needs of those students. We have aging facilities, we need to figure out how we're going to take care of our aging facilities, at the same time, addressing the safety concerns that everybody in the community has regarding our schools. And I just want to end it by saying, I want to put myself in the position to be the school board member that looks at things a little bit differently. Other school board members will look at all the positives. We have a bright future ahead of us, but we must not lose sight of the challenges that face our district.
Well, like everyone, I want to thank the youth commission. You guys are terrifying. You have the most interesting questions and the most challenging questions, and I truly wish that we'd be able to have a one-on-one, or be able to have a discussion going back and forth, so we could learn more about your concerns, about how we could better your schools. We have a very good board. We don't walk lockstep. We come from very different backgrounds. Our perspective on things are very different, and I consider that a good thing. As you've said, I've said, I'm a, I'm a stay-at-home mom, now an empty nester. My mom was a country schoolteacher, a one-room schoolteacher up north, walked five miles both ways. It's one of those wonderful things, but she really instilled the importance of education. And I want to have you have the same educational opportunities that my sons had. I want that for, for all of you. Yes, we have some challenges. We have a lot of challenges, but we have some really good things that are on the horizon. Not really have the ability to talk about them right now, but truly, we have good things. And I, I was part of the mock interviews over at Central, and I could see the students and the sense of focus that they had, and I could see that there was a sense of direction. And I feel good about where we're going and what we're doing.
On behalf of the West Alice Youth Commission, I'd like to thank not only the candidates and all in attendance for being here tonight. The election is Tuesday, April 3rd, and we encourage everyone in attendance who can to vote, and this will be rebroadcasted on the City Channel 25 over the next week. Thank you, guys, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.